I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go Paul.
Prising?
Yes.
Shippman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
I need approval of the minutes of the Fire Department, Police Department, Treasurer, Engineer, Code Office, Public Works, Police Pension Board, and the Planning Commission. You have a motion?
I do.
Second?
Second. Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Prising?
Yes.
Shippman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Any audience comment on any of the agenda items? CDVG update is...
I'm here.
There you are. Okay, Jamie.
I'll pass it on. Got a couple things on the agenda tonight. First of all, I want to give you each a copy of the packet of information I have prepared on the Chestnut Street project for Congressman Marletta. Here you go. That's just all the information about the Chestnut Street project. So we'll have that ready for Friday. I guess first we'll start, I'm gonna go out of order a little bit. We'll start with the OPG basketball court project. Sometime, several years ago, from what I understand, Bill Segal had worked it out with the CD that your city engineer could do your CDVG projects if they were within his scope of work and reason. So we had asked him if he would do the OPG basketball court engineering, so that we didn't have to go out and procure an engineer because it's a very small project, but we still need bid specs to do that project. So tonight I just wanted to ask if council was okay with having John do those bid documents for that project. Or we can go out and procure an engineer, or the city can pay for the engineer with their own money and use whoever you like.
Right, and he did it the first time, right? Correct?
Did he? Did you?
Were you involved in that first time around?
I don't remember what passes.
Do you need to vote for that, or are you just gonna tell?
I don't think you need to vote, I just needed to make sure that was alright with you.
Anybody oppose the city engineer working on the city project?
I think I do need to vote. My contract with the city has a provision there that when you choose me to do a CDVG project or a non-CDVG project, I need to notice this procedure. This would be, since the scope is not defined, this would be on a man on expense basis, according to the existing contract, as cited in reference in my report. And the only due development is going to be, especially, your alternative is to RFP for small projects, it's your choice. I'll make the motion when it's done.
Do you second?
Prising?
Yes.
Shippman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Okay. Next, I wanted to provide you with an update on the demolition CDVG project. The redevelopment authority held two auctions the last two Thursdays, and a majority of the properties have sold. Five of them were CDVG demolitions, so some program income has been generated that we can continue using for CDVG projects. Right now, what we have to do with redevelopment authorities is decide on some projects to demolish with the county's Keystone Community Program Funds for Demolition, and a little bit of tax credit money that the county also got for Sunbury. We're gonna be working on that at the next redevelopment authority meeting. So if any of the councilmen or anybody have any suggestions on properties that are located, basically Market Street South to Bainbridge, because that's our target area, you have any suggested vacant properties that we should be looking at, get them to Scherl, who is the secretary for the authority, and we need to make some decisions on that. There's a little bit of money left in the CDVG demolition activity. However, I'm gonna wait until we finalize all of the invoices for the projects that are done. They've all been sold now, so right now we're just waiting to finalize any legal expenses for the sale of those properties, the final invoice from CES for the engineering, and then Steinbockers. Jim Lee had asked that if you would take a look at Front Street and Chestnut Street and check out the restoration. He meant to do it the other day when he was here, but he ran out of time through the surveying. So if you guys would check them out, make sure you're okay with the restoration, and then we can release final payment to Steinbocker as well. Next. Last time I was here, you voted to hire CES engineering to do the preliminary design and study work for the Forest Street traffic signals to apply for our Penda Arlie grant. They were here last week and did all the surveying, so that's moving forward, so there shouldn't be any problems with getting that Arlie grant submitted in June. CES was also here last week and did surveying Chestnut Street on the municipal authority pieces of the project. Lee met with Mike Hur Center and talked about the sewer and stormwater projects, so that keeps moving forward. What I gave you tonight again is the packet for Marletta, so that we can see if there's any federal funding around that we could get to help finalize payment on that project. We were awarded the Keystone Communities Grant Funds for $500,000 for that project. I did give you the original of that letter, it's my mayor, I laid it up there for you. So we did have the additional $500,000 in state funding. What we're looking at now is a competitive application through CDVG to put some additional money into it, but I brought Tyler along to do that, so before I do that, the real reason I was here tonight, before all the rest of that, was to do project selection for your 2014 CDVG project. And I'm recommending that you select the Chestnut Street project. It should be about $246,000 to go into that, which is needed to fund the entire project, and then the normal $54,000 for CDVG administration. So if you would take action to select that as your project, and next month we have the final public hearing for CDVG 2014.
This is 2014 funding we're committing?
Yes, which you'll see next year sometime.
Okay, so we need a motion to put the 2014 project money into the Chestnut Street project?
Yeah. Deal.
Okay, so I brought Tyler along for your series. Oh, you didn't vote yet?
No.
Oh, I thought you just called.
Shippman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Prising?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna hurry to get out of your way, see? So something exciting going on, I don't know. One thing I do need to ask is, would somebody please take a photo of Chestnut Street at night, so I can show them how dark it is and put it in my application for something, or the competitive application, that's what I'm looking for. Like, I need it for something, what do I need it for? I know what it is, it's that presentation for the TAC grant with Penda, I want a dark picture of Chestnut Street.
Thank you for the photo of Chestnut Street.
And I'm not here when it started usually, so...
Just any black photo won't work?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Now, I have Tyler, Howard Dombrowski is the new member of our SABAC CDECOM. Come here. He is going to be doing the competitive application for the city, should you choose to move forward. Last month you did vote to approve doing it. I'm gonna let him handle the rest of that, and that's all we have to do.
Welcome Tyler.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody. As Jamie said, I'm here tonight just to talk a little bit about the competitive component of the 2014 CDVG application that we're looking to do. Let's see here, as she mentioned, we're looking to put in a $500,000 application to go along with the Chestnut Street project. We are looking to do that because the Municipal Authority of Sunbury has decided to add its water, sewer, and stormwater, I guess, problems that we're looking to fix for this project. So we're looking to get $500,000 for that component of things. We are requesting that the council decide to move forward and have its first public hearing on Monday, June the 9th, at 6:15 PM, so it would just coincide with the regular council meeting that would be taking place then. As Jamie had mentioned a little bit, that, you know, there's a public hearing requirement as part of redevelopment block grant process, and that would, having that public hearing on June the 9th would help fulfill that requirement, and we're just asking permission from council, if that's okay. If it is, we will email Terry tomorrow, the public hearing notices that will need to be going up around the city, and at any, I guess, well-traveled location that, you know, people generally add. So if we could just get that permission to have that public hearing, that would be fantastic.
Okay, and that's gonna be in June the 9th?
Yes.
Okay, need a motion? Second?
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Prising?
Yes.
Shippman?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Megan, dear? There you be. SRI report?
The Spark Planters are getting ready to go up very soon. Actually, already sold all the old ones to people in the community, and then also the Seals Grove. The Promotions Committee is working on a business promotion to do discount cards for city businesses. The Hill Neighborhood recently had their successful yard sale, the Neighborhood Plea, and they also have had a really good response for the rainmill workshops. Old Town Committee is continuing development on new committees and activities. The River Festival, of course, is ongoing. Lastly, Riverfront Planning, we have Lake Dusta Wine Brew Festival. We are getting vendors for that, and tickets go on sale July 11th at Brewers Outlet. A little bit more on the impending horizon is Wake the Lake Concert, which will be held June 7th, and we have a request to lift the open container. Additionally, the Albright Center, we are, the property is being surveyed, and the deed is being prepared for transfer, so that should be announced at any time. And this weekend, on May 17th, at 10 AM, is the Hometown Veterans Unveiling Ceremony. Those are all in the downtown, so hopefully you've had a chance to look at those. Any other questions for me?
Now, the weather held up for you for the help. The Hill Neighborhood yard sales, that should have been pretty successful. Unless you left your stuff out too late, I guess, in the rain game. So we have an agreement that we have to act on between SRI and the City of Sunbury to, for the Wake the Lake, pretty much to lease the Riverfront for a dollar for that event. So I need a motion to accept this agreement on, was it June 7th? You second?
Ister? Prising?
Yes.
Shippman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And also on that event is the resolution which pretty much waives the open container law for the event. So I need a motion to accept the open container law.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Prising?
Yes.
Shippman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
You have a question for Megan?
Megan, I don't know if this is a time or not, but I just like to pass a thank you on to Zach for the cleanup that he done, I think it was in our same job that we did, that he put together, and I feel the all hands are pleased, and it was, it was a fantastic event, fantastic.
I'll make sure to pass it on to him, yeah, it's an amazing event, but he pulls it together. And then Doug left us.
What's the date of the River Festival?
The River Festival, 15th and 16th of August. Is that correct?
What's that?
River Festival, 15th and 16th, or 15th and 16th of August?
Yes, 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 correct. Does the banner kick off this Saturday or next Saturday?
This Saturday, so Keith at 10 AM, and Cameron Park.
What kicks off?
The Hometown Banner?
The Hometown Banner.
Yeah, we'll have Kino Speaker, a couple Speakers, and just a little event to take off the Hometown Veterans.
Cameron Park, right?
Yes, Cameron Park. And thank you so much for passing those, and also thank you to the city group for everything that's done with the planters, and the city got them all up in time for us, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Redevelopment Authority update, as you're aware, last Thursday we sold four and five.
Four and five?
Yeah, both of them. So we still have two properties left over that the Redevelopment Authority is gonna be talking about, but last Thursday was 48,500 we brought in. Again, we need to go back to some of the smaller empty lots and decide what we wanna do, if come the Redevelopment Authority be talking about in the future. But it was a very successful weekend, the one on Bainbridge, that house went for 37,000, so that was very dicey. So our blight removal is continuing on with the support of the citizens and other people that want to invest in the community by fixing up those homes. And we haven't found, actually, there was one on Court Street, we didn't sell, that's not very good shape, so we have to talk about that also, it's not all vacant lots, just those two. Unfinished business, Surveillance Camera Report, John.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I'd like to bring the citizens of Sunbury up to date, some information on the camera project, where, how far we've come, where we stand. I'd like to say that this is a, this is a project that some of us have concerns about from the standpoint of, should government be spying on its own citizens? And so, this was probably the wrong project at the wrong time for the wrong reasons, but we'll muddle through. On September the 22nd of 2010, the city received notification of a federal earmark that had been approved on December the 16th of 2009. Now, all of you can count that that's like nine months, but the federal government's never been known to do anything in too timely a fashion, and so the city didn't receive notification until more than nine months after the earmark had been approved. That point, the city began to do research into the type of cameras that would be suited for the city best, and how they would be utilized and so forth. No small task, considering that the grant was $200,000, and the city wanted to make the best available use of that money, and so did a lot of research. It was discussed at council meeting next, on October the 8th of 2012, and at that point, it was discussed for general information purposes, so that there could be input and information given, feedback given from the citizens of Sunbury. The city advertised for bids, the bid notice went into the paper several days later on October the 12th of 2012, requesting bids for the cameras. Our October 22nd, 2012 council meeting, the city received and opened eight bids and reviewed them. Council moved to purchase the cameras and related equipment. AVP International Incorporated was low bidder, and Global Surveillance System was second low bidder on the camera equipment. DDB Unlimited was low bidder on some peripheral equipment, and Provantage was low bidder on other equipment. So at that time, the quotes were reviewed, and the bids were awarded to low bidders that night. The quotes specified that the base, the price was based on purchase of 100 cameras. Both companies that bid 1 and 2 were wholesalers, who do not, who do not sell in small quantities. Installation was not included in either the bid specs or in the bid quotes. On October, October the 26th, 2012, four days after that vote, the two low bidders withdrew their bid, since they had resellers that were bidding basically on their behalf, they did not want to commit, and as I understand it, had contractual obligations to those who resell for them, not to compete. And so both of those, the AVP International Incorporated and Global Surveillance Systems withdrew their bids on October the 22nd, 2012. At the next council meeting, on November the 11th of 2012, council announced the bid withdrawals and awarded the bid to the next low bidder, which was Genesis Security Integration of Pittsburgh. The council also had some discussion at that meeting on why the process had taken so long, because after all, this was almost two years, this was two years after they had, we had been notified of the bid award. For everyone's information, the minutes of all these meetings are posted on the Sunbury City website at www.cityofsunbury.org, and those are posted normally at reasonable time after each meeting. So this has all been available online, and it's been available online for two years. So anyone who wanted the information, very easy to get, no one's trying to hide any information. 11/29, November the 29th, about two weeks later, the city drew down the first $150,000 for the purchase of cameras from the DOJ grant, and $5,041.02 from a JAG grant to be used for other camera expenses. Purchases were made immediately following that. Genesis Security Systems, $166,728 to purchase cameras. DDB Unlimited, $26,426.12 for some peripheral equipment. 3G Store, $7,751.76. Cradle Point Technology/Ryzen, $7,700. Warrior Electronics, $2,053. Canon Electric, $9,884. Global Security Tactics, $7,300. And those expenditures basically were substantially about $25,000 more than the grant that the city received from the Department of Justice. So by this time, the city was already into spending some of your money, some of our local taxpayers' money to get this project done. Maybe some of you have had a project at your house, and you have a brother-in-law that's a handy guy, and you have a friend across town that's gonna help you out, and so you go buy the stuff, and people all, nobody shows up to help you, and after a few months you realize now you're in deep yogurt, and you're gonna have to somehow do this project by yourself. Well, that's sort of how this project turned out, because there was no, in an effort to buy the maximum number of cameras, there was no provision made for installation. December the 5th of 2012, the camera requested the final drawdown on the grant. January the 7th of 2013, the city filed the final grant report showing what was purchased with the grant money, including the details of the items that were purchased in unit cost, and it was submitted to the Department of Justice. Within 60 days, the city received a letter from the US Department of Justice stating, and I quote from that letter, "A final analysis of budgeted costs has been completed. Costs under this award appear reasonable, allowable, and consistent with existing guidelines." The letter further states, quote, "All costs listed in this budget were programmatically approved based on the final budget detail worksheets submitted by your agent to the comms office," end quote. So the Department of Justice did a complete review of everything that was submitted to them, found it to be in good order, and it was therefore accepted by the Department of Justice as being in compliance with the grant that we had received from them. Each invoice has been reviewed here in the city as it was received, for clarity, reviewed and clarified, and then forwarded to the Treasurer's Office for payment. The Treasurer's Office has reviewed and scrutinized each invoice for the accuracy, including that we got the proper amounts and numbers and so forth, and then it was entered into the computer system and checked withdrawn, which requires three different signatures from the city. So the city has acted prudently throughout this entire process, everything is accounted for, and the Department of Justice is satisfied that we correctly and properly spent the money that we were given from them. Just a couple of additional items. The cameras have two lenses, one is daytime and one is nighttime lens, so the cameras do have daytime, nighttime capability. Information about the cameras and where they're located are being classified for security reasons. Obviously, I think everyone understands that you just don't publish where you have these. The city has continued to spend some additional money on this project as we install cameras and additional cameras have been deployed since that time, and there are some cameras that still need to be deployed. So the city is working diligently to put these at the proper place, a lot of discussion and a lot of thought has to go into this, as to where they could be placed that would be the most advantageous for law enforcement in the city and to protect the citizens of Sunbury. So with that, the report is complete, and I believe that the city has met all its obligations under the grant and to the taxpayers of the city of Sunbury.
I just wanna add one thing, that you said there's no provision for installation, and I agree there's no detailed provision for installation, but the plan always was to use outside money, city workers for like in-kind service, there's like Fort Discovery Foundation money, the New Burger King, and so on, they come in and be money, so there's clearly ongoing, and then as you said earlier, this will continue to grow for years and years here, hopefully, but as it grows, we'll use that money for the installation in the future. Okay, new business, Police Department announcement. I'm gonna read this as a news release, so everybody has the exact same news. The Sunbury Mayor David Prising has demoted Chief of Police Stephen Mazzio to an active-duty officer of the City of Sunbury Police Department. Mazzio is currently on a two-week leave of absence with pay and benefits. Prising's decision was based on serious personnel issues that will not be discussed in public. The mayor reassures all citizens of Sunbury and the surrounding communities that count on the Sunbury Police Department for assistance that the day-to-day operations of the Sunbury Police Department will continue as we work through this current situation. The police contract mandates that attentive acting chief must be named from the ranks of the four supervisors. Mayor Prising has decided that Corporal Bradley Hare will fill that role effective May 12th, 2014, and continue for a maximum of 90 days. It is the mayor's intent to offer interviews to all members of the Sunbury Police Department before interviewing or discussion for any outside prospects. The mayor will be reevaluating many current concerns within the department, which include budget restraints, high accumulation of compensatory time among officers, abuse of sick time. These all lead to the inability to be proactive and to a low morale within the department. Second reading, PAA Act 90.
I have good news to share with you councilmembers. The Act 90 ordinance that we've read at a prior council meeting, while it is, it is nice to have, it is not required. The Act 90 ordinance that was proposed deals with the Neighborhood Light Reclamation and Revitalization Act, or as we refer to it as Act 90. And it's, it's all to reduce blighted properties and to address code violations within the city. It's state law, so we can go ahead and start using it immediately. We don't have to enact an ordinance to be able to do so. What I have prepared, though, is a resolution for you to pass, and what it says is that whereas the City Council of the Cities of Sunbury has determined that the city will continue to use all tools available to end blight in the City of Sunbury. Therefore, it is resolved as follows. Neighborhood Light Reclamation and Revitalization Act, or Act 90, shall be used by the city to reduce blighted properties in the city. Act 90 shall be coupled with the Property Maintenance Code and Chapter 131 of the Code of the City of Sunbury to stop blight. Just as a side note, Chapter 131 deals with public nuisance. The blighted conditions of property shall continue to be a priority of City Council. So I would present this resolution to pass, and encourage the Code Office and the council to continue to use this as their tool to go after blight.
If I could just add to that, we want to pass this, because then we won't have to pay to put all this in the book, since it is state law already. So all we're doing is using this like our second pass. So if I can have a motion to accept this resolution, I'm gonna...
Prising?
Yes.
Shippman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Hope the bids for police payments, there are none, correct? So we'll just cross that off. Okay. 239 Spruce Street, we want to address that first with a resolution. Whereas the city solicitor has made the decision to suggest special litigation counsel to represent the city in litigation, captioned that Terry Marshall and Mary Marshals versus City of Sunbury, resolved, his attorney Jim Bathgate is hereby appointed to serve as a special litigation counsel, shall serve at a rate of $150 an hour, which is equal to the routine paid to the city solicitor. Special litigation counsel shall report to the mayor and the Director of Accounts and Finance. We need to get this process moving, so I think that we need a motion to accept this.
Shippman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Prising?
Yes.
Yes.
This has always been a redevelopment authority project, but for the, to make it official, get it in the books. Whereas the city of Sunbury is involved in cleaning up blighted properties through the help of the City of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority, is resolved as follows, the city council, the City of Sunbury delegates its authority over 239 Spru Street to the Sunbury Redevelopment Authority, and the redevelopment authority shall comply with state and local laws to remedy the blight issue at 239 Spru Street. So I need a motion to accept that also?
I'll make a motion. In a second?
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Shidman?
Yes.
And we'll have a report on it very next meeting with our plan. Harv approval?
Yeah, I'm going to defer, as far as the explanation goes, to zoning officer Williams. He is also the city representative at the Harv. He was at the meeting, and I was at, I had another meeting that night, so I'm going to let him explain what's happened with the property and the stores in this street before I make a motion.
Mayor Council, based on the historical review board, reviewed a project for a property located at 343 Markus Street, which is currently the Salvation Army store. Owner is V. W., who owns the Dollop Ritz Store. His request was for facade restoration on a complete front. Right now, it is basically a silk panel, which is a panel that's coming loose, and he's concerned of the public safety going by his building. At this point, he wants to install on the storefront area a brick facade to match his restaurant area and the current, the last approved project across the street at the clinic. On a second story from the, he wants to put an EIF, which is a stucco or a drive-in. He wants to match colors that are currently there. The historical review board did ask if he would preserve the lines above all the windows and to match the building as much as possible. The contractor there did say that you would do everything that they asked. Also, they asked if they could preserve the express pillars, which are columns that are sticking out of the building, he said that they would look into that to preserve the building as much as possible.
As far as, no problem, and I make a motion that the council accepts renovations of the rules.
You accept it?
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Shidman?
Yes.
I've got one other thing, and I'm not quite sure we need to do anything with this or not. Mr. Heller was in the light, and I guess he spoke with Joe about having a chicken barbecue for his niece or his daughter, granddaughter.
Granddaughter, right.
On his property where the fire was, and that's all they're going to do, they're just going to have, not going to be revans, not going to be any alcohol, beverages, or anything like that, just going to be about 60 people there this weekend?
No, it's going to be Saturday, June 7th, from 12 till 4.
12, 13, 14, yeah. But it's on the same property, and he's just having a barbecue, a chicken barbecue, I don't know, but I'll make a motion that we approve this, for him to do that.
We have to do something special, or it's only his own property, right?
Yeah, it's on the property that went down right behind you, so right in front of Mr. Roger Chestnut Street. I don't think we need to do anything.